Here, I'll put the outside legs up.
No, that's not gonna work either. There you go. Turn the ones back down to that.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, our nation, our God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to this special board meeting. I specifically want to thank this evening Citizens Solar Committee, Planning Commission, for all their hard work that has brought us to this evening. I also want to thank Mike Homier for all of his work and his attendance here this evening. Our goal this evening is to hammer out a solar ordinance amendment that is agreeable to the residents, the planning commission, and the township board. A UAW president once said, "A successful negotiation is when both sides walk away from the table and not getting everything they wanted." Maybe we can do better than that this evening. I would like to ask everyone to please be polite, respectful, and productive. Let's get it done. Anyone else on the board have anything to say? We got vocal?
Bushy's?
Here.
E. Grove? W. Grove?
Here.
And Crampin Antherton? Witt? Here. Planning Commission Chair Swain Kooch?
Here.
Vice Chair Kerr?
Here.
Secretary Passan?
Here.
Member Morrison?
Here.
Member Klein?
Here.
Member Witt?
Here.
Is that everyone?
Okay, then at this time, I'd like to take, turn the floor over to Madam Chairperson of the Planning Commission.
Oh, wait, what? Uh, this is your meeting. Do you have anything to say? Oh, no, I do not have anything to say.
Yeah, well, guess we'll like, let, my cap score.
Well, I think, I figure it's probably important to figure out where we're starting from, right? I mean, we've got multiple different versions. I put these on a flash drive before I gave orders in it. So, um, the FSCEs version, which is the bottom, was the one that I provided to the Planning Commission at the end of March. And then we have two others, I think that were provided by the Citizens Group. One was dated April 10, one was dated April 28. So, I'm not sure which version wants to start with.
I would start with the one you drafted and incorporate changes as you go.
Well, I think, if I'm not mistaken, that this is, I think that that might be that version subject to red line from the committee. Am I right about that, Sarah?
You are.
Okay. So this would be the 32423 with the proposed input from the committee on the 42823. We can skip the 410 one because I think it was more narrative than actual red lines. And from all the ordinances that we drafted in the past.
That's what we were just talking about.
Any way you can make the font a little bit bigger, please? Mr. Homier? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike? If you would allow me, we did skip one item on the agenda, which is called the public. So, does anyone at this point, before we get started, wish to address the board and the planning commission? Okay, we got that item off the agenda, let's go forward.
Okay, so, um, I guess, you know, without, um, we can take this line by line if that's what you want to do. I've only had a limited opportunity to go through this version since it just got it the other day, but, um, so, I'm not sure where you want to start with this and with those red lines. I mean, I don't, from a, from a legal perspective, I don't have any issues with, um, with these red lines. Or in number four, or five. Here's a comment, and so, um, you know, I'm not su- I'm not sure again how the board and the planning commission want to see.
I say we go through and anything that's a comment that you have a response to, that we can work on. If you don't have any legal issues with most of the red lines, we can go through it and just hit on the high notes and that's just my opinion. And if there's something in the comment section that you have a comment for you, that you would like to put in there to answer that comment.
Sure, so, number six, um, when we talk about these communities, isn't this related to the clawback provisions on wind energy that went through the Michigan tax tribunal? They, municipalities got an adverse decision on the valuation of those renewable energy facilities, and now there's this clawback. And so, that's what we mean by this number six. I could name them certainly just by going through the MTT documents. I'm not sure that it's necessary to do so.
It would shouldn't be an act or...
Yeah, no, it's really just a basis and purpose for what it is that you're doing.
That's what I think.
Mike, could you home in on number eight regarding demonstrated need as far as the definition would be required or not required? And if it's a legal issue, I would like to know that also.
Did you have anything on number seven, no, before that?
Well, number seven, I'll, I'll, like, the whereas is kind of out of place, only because none of the other paragraphs have a whereas, so I would just start with if, if you want to include it. I did not go to the master plan to read this particular provision. Generally speaking, the master plan will speak for itself. I don't like necessarily putting this master plan quote in here because I don't know what's gonna happen with the master plan in the future. And so, when you have cross-references like this, there's a tendency then for things to change, whether it's a master plan or something else, where they might cross-reference it all.
That's been our policy in the past is to not do that referencing because of the exact reason you stated. So, the master plan stands by itself and the ordinance stands by itself.
What we were after with that is just to put in a preamble something about how important the current issue is. And you could change it to something. Other than I thought the preamble was really good, so.
This is really in the planning commission's side, but the word kind of has gotten about, but again, I wouldn't want to quote the master plan. If there's other words you could use to, Mike, if there's other words you could use to address drainage issues, or if it's addressed in another section, you know, a lot of times ordinances will refer to different things, and then, like you said, it comes up later, oh, well, this section of the ordinance is in direct violation of the past one. So, remove the master plan and just have the statement in and of itself without master plan reference because it is too...
Something to the effect of, County Township is a donor township when it comes to drainage. So, a simple statement as to that or, and/or add it to the drainage section, I guess.
Very unique in that one.
Yep.
Okay, so I just put a note, I'll revise that with more of a narrative statement than, than a direct quote and reference to the master plan. Number eight, should demonstrated need be defined? Well, it really is defined by old statute and case law, and so, I don't think that there's a need to define it here in paragraph number eight.
Should it be defined in the definitions of the ordinance itself or just leave it to what you just said?
Yeah, I mean, it's a, you know, it's a legal concept dictated by the Loving and Ailing Act as well as case law. There isn't much case law on demonstrated need because municipalities don't generally completely provide it to use, which is the only time you're likely to get to a demonstrated need anyway.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna take these out so that I know the double red line, but at least I know where to address them. I don't, I don't have any problem with including definitions of both of these. I don't know what the boards or planning commissions are, so I don't have a problem.
Yeah, you can see the original one for it.
Do you want to separate definitions section?
Yeah, so this is the addition of definitions to Article Two. So this is done in like a amending ordinance format already, so this would add these definitions to your existing zoning ordinance.
For the public's knowledge, that gets codified into the other ordinance. It's not just stand alone at the end eventually. The old stuff gets replaced with the new stuff.
I don't have necessarily an issue with the addition of the UL or the NEC. What I have a problem with is and the most current Michigan Uniform Building Code. And that's because they're issued every three years, and not all municipalities update them in that way. So, they might be lagging behind by one issue of those. And so, if they are lagging behind, it would cause them to use the current Michigan Uniform Building Code when they haven't actually adopted it yet. And by that, I'm likely referring to Livingston County, maybe your building?
What about, what if you accepted at the time of application of the most current code at the time of application?
Well, that, so if it said the most current Michigan Uniform Building Code adopted by the regulatory agency enforcing the code, that would be a correct statement. But I don't want to get out too far, like, for instance, you know, they're every three years, so I think it went, if memory serves me right, 15, 18, 21.
So, next year.
And so, maybe next year, but, but some of those municipalities don't adopt them immediately.
Yeah, no, understood.
The county does do our building code regulation and stuff.
That would probably fix the issue. So, number two says, "If an applicant, operator, or landowner of a solar energy system fails to comply with this ordinance, the township, in addition to any other remedy under this ordinance, shall revoke any approvals after giving the applicant notice and an opportunity to be heard." The shall presents some problems for a couple different reasons. One of which is if you are suggesting that you have the authority to revoke a special land use for the minorest of infractions under the ordinance, that's probably incorrect. Certainly substantial violations could be revoked, but even then, you know, you have to have pretty solid violations of the ordinance in order to just revoke a land use permit because it becomes a vested right. I don't have a problem with changing it to May because then it gives you some latitude on minor versus major violation.
How would that be clarified in the ordinance set for minor versus May?
Well, it wouldn't, we would just put May.
Okay.
And then at the time of the issue arising, we would seek legal counsel on what was or wasn't likely to be major, minor, I would think. Is that how you would do it?
Yeah, there was a, a case up in Tuscula County where the municipality attempted to revoke a special use permit for a wind farm on a violation that was kind of minor, and the court said, "No, you can do it." I'm not sure on the private solar energy system what the comment, the comment says list separate requirements, i.e. setbacks, screening, et cetera.
That was talked about with our planning commission last month because they had indicated that there would need to be smaller setbacks if it was a residential person and a smaller yard, we needed bigger setbacks, so they talked about separating out like those criteria for just like private.
Clarifying like on the smaller lots, you know, three-quarter acre to less than two, you know, two to five, five to 10, 10 to 50, whatever. You know, there's gonna be different, there's a possibility of different requirements on the setbacks, especially for the smaller parcels. There's no way they could comply with some of the numbers that we talked about.
So, Mike, you don't have a problem with the other shaws that you're scrolling by?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get back to that.
Okay.
I was looking for the setback requirements on the private solar energy system. Because at least in here, I don't see that. What I assume, and maybe I shouldn't, is that the setbacks would be applicable to that zoning district for structures in that district, wherever they might be.
As stated in the ordinance?
Yeah, so, so for instance, if you had a private solar energy system, whatever the underlying zoning district is in terms of setback, that would apply to these as structure.
So we could refer to it under residential to what the ordinance already, I'm not talking solar ordinance, I'm talking the general ordinance already specified.
Right.
Okay. So, a simple term or a statement in there in that residential section would be applicable? To that effect?
Well, the board passed a motion to restore the 1,000-foot setback.
I understand that, but that, that was not referring to residential. That's why there was discussion about separating residential from private, private from utility.
So you're saying basically like there's a, I'm just throwing out numbers because I don't have them memorized. A 25-foot side setback for a pole barn or something, you're saying the same setbacks would apply to residential?
Yes, for, for these systems.
Is that right, is there any other?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have any issues with these.
Because you're strong guys, you're okay with it.
Yeah, I, there's just three of them in here, so.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Is that Mike on?
E., I got, yeah, I got one here. But I can't see any of these edited, so.
E., I don't have any problem with, and that shall, so, that's fine.
Mike, on page four, A to Z, it also states about the Michigan Uniform Building Code. Does anything you change on that page also, or?
Yeah, I just added adopted by the enforcing agencies. And that makes it consistent with one of them. Abandonment, abandonment's a tricky issue. So this states that if it's been abandoned for a period of six months, property owner shall relocate within three months after the date of abandonment. So abandonment's a tricky issue, particularly when you deal with special use permits. And so, the courts have consistently said that time, the passage of time alone is not enough. That it has to be the passage of time with a manifest intent to abandon the use. And so, um, a lot of zoning ordinances still have this period of time as a lone measurement. I don't have any problem leaving it in there like that, but when it comes to enforcement of that, you're going to have to pair it with something else. So, for example, if it went pre-used for a period of six months, and the owner-operator went out of business, left the state, went bankrupt, right? That would be a manifest intent then to abandon like that use. But it's gotta be paired with something else, so.
If it falls into disrepair or visible signs of deterioration that it's not being used, possibly?
Possibly, and it depends on the extent of that, right? So, you know, if all of the panels are busted up, not working, and it remains that way, and no repairs have been made pursuant to the ordinance, then it may be...
The township would issue a letter saying, "Hey, are you still using these solar panels that are all broken?" And people complaining about them.
Yeah, remember, these are private ones, right? So, you may not know whether or not they're producing power, right? I mean, in short...
That's the problem, is how are you gonna know?
That's right, yeah.
So in far, as far as enforceability, how are you, how are you gonna do it if you don't know?
Yeah, typically, you know, if you're talking about roof or building mounted, which is what this refers to, I'm not sure that it matters a whole lot. You know, eventually, either a new property owner will buy it, or the existing property owner would likely remove them, I don't know. But yeah, you're likely not going to know, you're legal on the private.
Right, that's the point I'm trying to make, you may or may not know, so.
But I suspect, and I could be wrong about this, that there are structures in the township today that have solar panels on them.
Yes.
And you don't have any idea whether they're actually producing power or not.
No.
So I'm just gonna leave it the way it is for now. Just understand that on the enforcement side, we may need more than just time.
Is it better to put in there language saying, like, I'm just thinking forward when there's people that weren't involved in all this, and I guess they're gonna ask their legal counsel? Or should you have something in there about a period of time and?
Conditions.
Well, I would, except that I don't know that the law won't change, right? Because this is not dictated by statute, this is dictated by case law. And so, going forward, 15, 20 years, 25, should the ordinance last that long? Does the law change in that period of time, right? So, right now, the ordinance would say, "If it's been abandoned for a period of six months, you have three months to remove it." I think it's worthwhile to leave it that way, but just understand on the enforcement, we may need more. But each case presents its own set of facts on the manifest intent.
That was my question, was whether we wanted to leave it in or take it out, so if you're good with it, that's fine.
And then deal with it on a case by case basis?
Correct, because all the facts and circumstances are different, right, for each one.
So if you get a complaint from a neighboring resident that says, "Hey, these things are falling off their building, and it's obviously, and they're not using them."
Yeah.
They, they sign a formal complaint with the township, then the enforcement officer can go out there and get a look at it?
Yeah, sure, that's not a problem, but you can also imagine a scenario where somebody gets relocated because of a job, and they're out of the state for six, seven, eight months, their house doesn't sell, sit say.
Yeah.
Is that abandoned or not?
No.
See, I wouldn't consider it either, right? But, but they, but they are not producing power in that time either, or they are, but it's not being used, so. I don't have a problem with G, H is fine. 4A is fine as revised. I had a, I had a conversation recently about 16 feet. And I can't tell you where that came from, I'm looking at C, imagining height. I don't know where 16 feet came from, and I have gone back and looked and tried to discern why it's 16 feet as opposed to 10 feet or 15 feet, and there's no good answer for that.
The ones I was standing by were 15 feet when they're completely vertical.
Which, you know, again, other than the fact that they're 15 feet, there's no real reason why they can't be 10. Having said that, I'm not offended by 15 or 16 even, because that's likely not as tall as accessory buildings that you would otherwise allow in those zoning districts. D, I'm fine with, E is fine, F is fine too. Now, this comment says, discuss lot size to dictate program capacity for residential use. So we already addressed that in my comment, and I'll go back and take a look and insert that language about using the underlying setbacks in those districts. I didn't know my typing skills was beyond display.
Nobody's watching.
All right. So G, lot area. There's a comment, the shower's fine. There's a comment that says, discussion based on demonstrated need or voltage requirement, whichever is less. The only issue I have with this is that these are private systems, and presumably, nobody would put in a private system relatively more than what they otherwise need, right? I mean, there isn't a financial incentive enough, I don't think, to sell that power back to the grid, even for a residential lot.
Well, what we were trying to accomplish, Mr. Homie, was I mentioned some of these large farms, like Cudia, which have extensive gear, might need more than just a residential. And we didn't really quite know how to do that, but... And it would also, I also think that the more homeowners sold, we have, the less demonstrated we need to be to remain in the township.
Right, but these are ground-mounted private, right? So assume for the sake of argument that somebody's not going to build additional solar because otherwise, it's not going to be considered private.
It's only for their own use.
Correct, and so I don't think you would ever put in more than what you otherwise expect to use.
Well, they could be more than 50% of the principal building.
Except that this would say you can't be. Unless you're saying that you want to allow more than 50%.
Right, we want to allow more if they have a demonstrated need. It's what we think.
Gotcha.
I think there was a conversation about if there should be different specific size things for, like, commercial farm as opposed to a solar farm, but like he said, a dairy farm that needs more power, should there be a separate thing than what just a house would use? Because a big dairy farm, as he said, would use a lot more. And I think that was the conversation I heard, was how do we address that and allow them to do that? Because you don't want to restrict that, but you also don't want them to be held to the same standard as someone who's just doing their house, I guess.
Right, right, if the farmer wants to put in a larger system for strictly of own use, I don't think anybody sees a problem with that.
His big dairy barn would be bigger than the average house, which would increase the 50%.
That was a conversation.
Yeah.
So what's your pleasure with respect to that?
I think we had an issue before, even years ago, that the gentleman wanted to do it on residential, but he needed to go with a bigger size to satisfy his own needs. And I think part of that was, we made him give us what his needs were, and try to tailor around that. I know that doesn't nail it down, but I'm just trying to think how we handled that in the past, but it was on a residential system.
So if a farmer came and says, I need to run my barns on solar panels, does he get...
Well, this is what he needs to do it, and that's what he's gonna tailor his productive capacity for electricity too. And I know that doesn't narrow it.
Kind of leaves it open-ended.
I know, it doesn't nail it down, so.
Well, let me play devil's advocate.
Okay.
I need a lot of property because I'm gonna grow pot. And I am a... I am a property giver, and I support my own. And we can't, other than zoning, maybe regulate against that. And so now I've got 75% of my lot covered with solar because I need that additional power.
More than the rest of it's covered by marijuana growing through the...
So, you know, look, I'm happy to try and provide some outlet. So if you were, if you were going to allow more than 50% of the square footage of the principal building, then who has that authority to waive that requirement?
My question was gonna be, the principal building at a large dairy farm would, might be the dairy barn. How is, like, as said, it's gonna be a lot bigger, so how do you define what the principal building is? Maybe that's more of the issue of how to define that.
Well, it's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all, that's for sure.
Right.
Well, I think it should be based on the load-based calculation of what they are currently using with a limited amount of growth in the future to accommodate their needs.
Now, who's gonna figure that out? That's what I'm kinda wondering, how would you do that?
It's not hard to do.
I didn't mean it was hard, you gotta be able to enforce it and stand behind it, so you gotta know
What would it fall back?
legally what we're doing about it.
Fall back to a large piece of property, larger landowner, I think, is where that would fall into, but may not be.
Should we define the principal building as the main building where the power is gonna be used? But if it wasn't a dairy barn, that's considered a principal building?
I think you're opening up Pandora's box.
I would.
No, I was deferring to Mr. Homie on this, so. Okay, leave it the way it is, okay?
I mean, there is, like, for any particular ordinance, right? I mean, there are outlets built into your zoning ordinance that might be a variance request to the ZDA.
So if they didn't like the way that was worded, they could actually write there.
It's not necessarily how it's worded, but it would constitute a dimensional variance, which is always permitted in your zoning ordinance. But there's gotta be a practical difficulty.
Well, it's not like the...
Yeah, I go along with that.
Yeah, but that's on them to prove that they need more.
Right.
And it leaves the ordinance intact.
Right.
H is fine, I is fine, J is fine. C1 is fine.
So this was in the original, and then it disappeared. So that's our note at the bottom. It was in the first draft, and then it was gone, so we wondered, was that...
That was probably in the...
But we also realized that it said non-refundable at the top, and down there, it says, anything unused will be returned. So that's why we struck the top, non-refundable.
There's a difference, at least in the office, how we apply deposits and escrow. So we, like, you can decide how that goes. We obviously return unused escrow, and if that is what a deposit is specifically as stated there, it isn't non-refundable. But when we have application fees and things, those are non-refundable.
Just clarify the language.
Okay. Yeah, I saw it the other day.
It'd be fun, it'd be more fun, yeah.
The only thing I'm gonna add is this revision that you made the other day.
You say it out loud, just?
Yeah. So I'm just adding, together with any attachments to such agreements. So it's not only the agreement itself, but also attachments to that. This is a list of all parcel numbers that will be used by utilities, scale, solar energy system, documentation establishing ownership for each parcel, and any and all lease or option agreements, easements, purchase agreements for the subject parcels, together with any attachments to such agreements or easements.
Thank you.
You just add EIN number for current owner-operator, I don't have any problem with that. F is a written emergency response plan for responding emergencies, including fire emergency, and analyzing whether adequate resource, resources exist to respond to fires and other emergencies. So this is done, this is a requirement of the application, so this would be submitted by the applicant. There's a question about who does this. It's the applicant that has to do it. I don't have any problem with analyzing. So if you wanna add, you know, an analysis of whether there's adequate resources, I don't have any issues with that.
Now, like, at some point, does the state fire marshal have some type of input to that? Or do they have guidelines for their, the state fire marshal's office on whether or not a local municipality fire department is set up for something like this?
I don't think so, generally speaking, but I'm not sure if you did, if you reached out to them that they would not be able to provide at least some...
Like, how many, how many purse, how much person, what size trucks? You know, what they're gonna need to actually fight a fire in that situation.
Right.
Dave, I can tell you from reaching out to the state fire marshal's provision, that they don't have anything to do with this.
They won't even touch it?
They're not setting it out, they're not coming up with rules and regulations.
All right.
I did reach out to them.
To that, to that question or that point, do they have anything to fight the fire, or will they just watch it burn?
It's an unlikable fire, so until they get it de-energized, then they're not gonna do anything.
Thank you.
So I don't have a problem with immediate cleanup, and what was added is within seven days. That may or may not be too aggressive. And I suppose it depends on the emergencies. I think immediate gives you some flexibility. It may not be possible within seven days to clean up the site. Depending on contractors available, the extent of the emergency, what's necessary, I just don't know.
The extent of the damage.
Correct.
Where the cleanup crew has to come from.
Yep.
Can we say begin cleanup within seven days?
Well, I'm not sure what begin means. So for example, if I say to you, well, we've reached out to companies that do this kind of work, is that beginning? Or is it actual, physical?
Boots on the ground.
Moving stuff, I don't know. I think, you know, typically, when we talk about either cleanup or abatement of a problem, it's generally, say, within 30 days, just as a general matter.
Wow, that's gonna happen when they're... That'll happen anyway.
So would you specify within 30 days, or would you take out the days and just leave immediate at the discretion?
Yeah, we'd just leave immediate.
That's what I was saying.
What's the enforcement if they don't start cleanup?
Well, I wouldn't say it's nothing. I would say that it would be then, depending on, when you approve a special use permit, you can attach those regional conditions. So let's just assume for a minute that all of these are attached as regional conditions. But this is talking about the plan itself, right? And so you'll get those documentations with the application, and it's often that we will impose those conditions depending on what those plans are. So failure to abide by those conditions is actually a violation of their special use permit, and as we talked about earlier, if it's a material violation, may result in a revocation.
So if they don't start cleanup within a certain amount of days, and they don't look at it wanting to, we could use escrow money to call in a type of company to deal with them?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, I'm gonna have to wait to answer that until we get a little further down. You could always, you certainly could always, what would happen is, if it's a material violation, a couple different things. One is you might sue them.
Right.
Two is you might schedule a public hearing and revoke their permit. Which they likely will respond to, because otherwise, they won't have the ability to operate.
Right.
So you'll end up in court either way. G is fine. G is, requires a fire suppression system. So hopefully, that will go a long way in mitigating the potential fire issue.
Do you know of any that has a fire suppression system installed?
Well, I know a company that does it, but do you know of anybody that has any? I did not ask. Complete set of photos, video, and topography map of the entire development area prior to construction.
Just required, you should make a double underline there, or under the paragraph in that?
Yeah.
We always did that to notate that that was Marion's clause, but we added that, a double underline. We wanted to know where we got it from, but we did make an edit to it.
Okay. And I don't have any issues with that, obviously. I'm not sure what, as it relates to... I'm not sure what, as it relates to the application means under M.
I'm not really sure it was suggested. I thought that the, the statement itself was a little vague, so maybe that's why.
Well, the financial security actually here refers to the decommissioning, right?
Which has its own separate part.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So we only put it in here because it has to be submitted with the application.
With the application.
I, I don't really have a problem with the N. O, with the addition of solid or liquid hazardous waste. So before it read identification of a plan for managing any hazardous waste. The only problem I have with solid or liquid, and I, and I, again, I don't, I don't know enough, I suppose, about what hazardous waste there might be. But that excludes other wastes, other than solid or liquid. Q is fine. I don't have any problem with Q. Q talks about a testation for indemnification of the township its official elected or appointed holding them harmless for the cost of liability.
Let the boards know that we added that, so you would be protected.
You're always protected to the extent of the indemnification. R is a company that manufactures directions, instruction manual, and, I'm just gonna change this. specification sheets, including any unredacted safety manuals and materials to safety data sheets for installing anything. I think that's fine. Ground, or T, proof of environmental compliance, including compliance with. What's that?
The ground cover.
Well, there were no changes. This is fine, but I'm gonna change these.
Yeah, we only separated, they were in one big paragraph, and we didn't want anyone to read past anything, so we separated it out.
Changes are?
Uh, it's just numbering.
Numbering, okay. Are you wanting to agree?
And I'll, I'll make sure those are, I wanna make sure it's consistent with your provisions.
I think it's just numbers.
Just numbers?
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't have.
All right, insurance. The applicant owner-operator and landowner proof, sorry, proof of the applicant owner, operator, and landowner public liability insurance shall be provided at the time of application. If the application is approved, proof of insurance shall be provided as a township. Annually, their applicant policy shall provide bodily injury and property damage showing in county township as an additional insured. Also add all of the property owners as additional insurers. The applicant shall ensure for liability for the utility-scale solar system until removed for at least 25 million per occurrence to protect the applicant township and property owner. Proof of the current policy is required annually and shall be provided each year to the township prior to the anniversary date of special land use permit. Okay, so, I just made a couple changes. Inserted to each participating property owner. In two places, if they're reading. All right. W.
Just adding in there, then include the agency.
I just wanted to, uh.
Yeah. See how it was actually working.
All right, so, this W, I revised it. It says compliance with county building code. Okay. Construction of utility solar energy facility shall comply with most current version of Michigan Building Code, National Electric Code, adopted by the enforcement agencies as a condition of any land use permit under this section.
Special land use permit?
Uh, yeah, special. I'm just gonna put a note in here, because I'm not sure this section belongs here. It's an application requirement. But I'll take it as that. Yeah, yeah. Conceptual plan X. Graphical demonstrated, preferably computer-generated, of the utility-scale utility solar system as completed.
Would it be fair just to have scale drawing?
Yeah. So. All right, so I just revised it.
Do you want a solar energy system facility?
Solar energy facility. Yep, yeah. No. Because it's a defined term, so. Graphical computer-generated depiction of how the utility-scale solar energy system will appear from all directions. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes. Hours of construction shall be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in all directions, Saturday, Sunday, and February break as holiday. I'm okay with that, but again, I'm not sure it belongs here.
Or would you think it would be recommended?
Probably in the review and approval.
Is how you run Google, yeah?
Okay, site plan application requirements. That's K is fine. The applicant shall provide a detailed site plan. Two, location of all existing structures or dwellings on the parcel. On location of all existing structures or dwellings on adjacent. Non-participating properties within a thousand feet of the property's lines. So everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
You have an issue with a thousand feet?
Uh, this is just a depiction of those structures within a thousand feet of the participating properties. Um, seven's fine. Date, anticipated construction schedule and conclusion date. So I just, this paragraph nine talks about a pay for by the applicant. So any additional studies or requests about a planning permission paid for by the applicant, including an outstanding following. That's sort of a general proposition, and that's what the escrow is for anyways, to the extent that they don't, are not paid. So we'll just add that to the front end, under A, where then it says the applicant shall, at its expense, provide a detailed site plan with all of the following. B talks about environmental analysis, and added to that is also to include tree removal study. study slash impact analysis if tree removal is determined to be necessary by the planning commission. I'm not sure why the planning commission would determine if tree removal is necessary.
Should it be the applicant, not the planning commission?
Yeah, I'm very careful about tree removal these days. I mean, there was a case just came out the other day striking down a township's tree ordinance as unconstitutional. And so this doesn't go that far, obviously. It only talks about to include a study and impact analysis, so...
If you start with the word analysis, does that solve the specific problem?
We just add it right there.
For which one?
An analysis by a third, a third-party qualified professional to identify and assess any potential impacts on the natural environment, including the mountain to remove all trees, wetlands, other fragile ecosystems. Good?
Yes.
Yep. C, fine. D... D is fine.
We talked about last month about the Indian and Michigan Air Dynamics Association involved in that, as far as hazards, glare, or anything around the airport that we do have type of situation. Is that something that needs to be in that report also? Wasn't it covered under glare? Wasn't there a section on glare?
So this talks about...
Who's, who's gonna be the third party, or should it be the state?
Well, that presupposes the state would do it.
Yeah, that's true.
So you mentioned the FFA and then the...
FFA and whatever.
I think the...
Ready? That should fix it.
Does our little airport get any input? A little airport in Cowley Township, does it get any input into solar?
I haven't talked to them.
He's shaking his head yes. He's shaking and said yes.
Dennis, Dennis, do you have any comment?
The FAA will ask the airport managers, as will the Michigan Air Dynamics Commission, they'll come down and speak with the managers, and the managers will have the large input as to how close they can be. Plus, remember the township has an overlay district that restricts height and stuff of any homes or barns or solar panels.
Within a certain...
Proximity to the airport.
Yep. That ordinance is already in place.
Right. C is approval from other agencies. Final site plan approval may be granted only after the applicant receives one, all required federal state approvals, and two approvals by the local fire chief, county drain commissioner, county road commissioner, local airport zoning authority, if applicable, and county building department. Add Livingston County Environmental Health Department and tribal historic, that should be Ice Preservation Office? So, so I, I, I don't think the Environmental Health Department has any jurisdiction over it, but, um, that's not to say they couldn't render, I suppose, an opinion if they're willing to do so, but I'm not sure why they would.
It's not Livingston County Health Department, it's not the Health Department. There's an environmental section of the Health Department.
And so typically, you know, the Health Department regulates food safety, well-inseptic, but I don't know that they would be appropriate to, to give an approval here.
Will we have our wells being tested? Will there be well sites on these solar farms to be tested there before the problem gets to us? Can that be wrote somewhere or wouldn't it?
Sorry, can you repeat it?
Uh, there going to be wells on the solar compound site, so that these wells can be tested to see if there's any water table damage before it gets to us.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, typically, you know, I, I don't think that there are wells installed. Now, whether or not they buy properties that already have wells on them, that might be a different issue, I don't know.
So we can't ask them or tell them they have to have a well dug there?
You guys monitoring well?
Yeah, monitoring well, yeah.
I, I don't know, I'm gonna have to think about that. Because it's, you know, I looked actually around the country, and I cannot find one reported case of groundwater contamination even remotely linked to solar panels. Now, that's not to say it wouldn't happen, okay? I'm just saying that it, it, it may be so remote that having a monitoring well drilled might actually be worse than not having one at all.
With that being said, solar's probably a new source of energy, it's almost.
We don't want to be the first ones where it happens. You know, fire safety is our...
No, but every, you know, every, every, every well you drill has the potential of contaminating groundwater. And so we talk about a lot of wellhead protection, so drilling wells may actually not serve the purpose that you think it's going to. But I, we can, I'll add a note, and we can talk about that. Just for, but like I said, you know, on the, on the Health Department, I just don't think that they'll have anything to add here.
Or do they even have any, they don't have any authority in the situation?
No.
So have the tribal officers been notified for our area? You know, I see it's being crossed there, the tribal historic preservation officers, preservation, preservation officers? Have they been notified that this potentially could be happening in our township? Because I know that there are some areas close to my property and a property across the street with burial grounds.
Yeah, it took, I've looked, to my, to my knowledge, there are no reservations located in your township. And so...
No reservations, but...
But that, but that sort of defines jurisdictional issues, right? So I'll give you an example. Let's suppose you own forty acres, right? And you want to do something with that forty acres, and somebody says, "Well, you need to get the tribal historic preservation officers involved." You would say, "For what?" Right? I mean, I, I don't know what jurisdiction that they would have to the extent that it's not a reservation. So I'm not sure what we're asking them for.
Well, they start digging, and we have bones and everything coming up.
Well, that may present a different issue, but...
It's not recognized by the state or the national reservation, Indian reservation. Well, if they have, if they have an Indian representative on site regarding cell towers, why wouldn't they have it here? And I believe this is a federal issue, and I believe this considering federal funds, so I think it would be applicable.
Rio's Kahakta, Conway and Kahakta, right on the border line where Indian reservation and burial grounds.
I'm not saying we can do anything about it, but if it's related to federal funding, you know, at least we ask the question in the application process as a CYA township would have to help.
Yeah, well, this, this goes a bit further, right? So this says, "Final site, final site plan approval may be granted only after the applicant receives..." And they wanted to add the tribal historic preservation officer. So I don't, I don't know what that means, right?
I'm just saying, it was come up on a cell tower issue that I personally witnessed. They had an actual representative, some Indian tribal council there. And I don't know if it had to do with federal funding or not federal funding, I'm not sure. So I'm just, is it something that the applicant should be made aware of during the application process, or do we just leave it alone? I'm, I'm not saying that the wording is correct, I'm just saying that, do we even dis, do we even deal with it, or we just leave it alone? Don't even deal with it.
As stated, we don't have a reservation in this township. At one point, you said something about tribal historical, historic preservation. Is it a matter of the wording's wrong, or is it not really applicable here because we don't have a reservation?
I don't know, it would come up on, on past developments, that's all I'm bringing it up for now, so... Does it read it back one?
So... There may be federal tax subsidies, but that's different than federal funding. So I think, I think that, you know, put in to the extent that it's applicable, and I'll, I'll look at all sorts of issue specifically on the tribal issue, but, you know, it's not uncommon to have the state historic preservation office comment on development. So to the extent that it's applicable, then we can put in, including any applicable approval by the state historic preservation office.
Thank you.
The second one is approval by the local fire chief. I don't know what that means, because we have provisions in here about emergency response plans, fire suppression systems. Under what standard would the local fire chief say no?
I think you cover it in the other section, as you said, it really isn't...
It doesn't mean you can't get their input, but, but I don't think, I don't think giving any of these entities some sort of approval amounts to, could amount to, an improper delegation of your zoning authority. Doesn't seem like the fire authority's gotta give that we have the whiz to handle this. Well, that's gonna be all part of the plan, right? And you can get their input, but it still remains, you know, on the, on the special use permit side, it remains the township that has to give that authority. Not, say, the county road commission, or the local airport zoning boards. Again, we, you can get though, you can get their input, and to the extent that they have jurisdiction over a portion of that, then that's fine. But take, for instance, the county road commission. What authority does the county road commission have over the development of a solar farm?
Not sure the roads are adequate to handle, like traffic, that means...
Even then, it's limited, right? Because they're county, they're public roads. I mean, why would you, why would you, um, uh, sort out this use as opposed to another use? Like, what about trucks used for farming?
Gravel mining.
Gravel mining? I mean, there's all kinds of road uses that, you know, I just, I just don't think that delegating that authority to the county road commission, and so the county road commission says, "Well, we're not gonna approve it," and you turn around and say, "Well, we're not giving you a special use permit." Because the county road commission, who has no jurisdiction, said, "No, we don't want it."
That's like the county road commission saying, "Okay, you can't put 700 houses in this seed field because it's gonna tear my roads up." They don't have that authority to do that.
I mean, I, I really think that everything is covered under paragraph one, right? But I would change it just a little.
Well, just like right now, we're having problems between the, the county and the township, especially there, you know, we live on Owasso Road, and we have Kahakta, and we have Conway, and it's, they're split up between the counties, and you get down to where the pavement is, and we're on gravel, and it's about getting anything done, and who's gonna pay for it? So what? It's a different subject.
I think you should defer to your thoughts on that specifying agencies and just where you put federal, state, and local approval, that, like you said, that says it all. Not locking ourselves into something that can't happen.
All right, so now this would read, "Approvals from other agencies. Final site plan approval may be granted only after the applicant receives all required federal, state, and local approvals, including any applicable approval by the state historic preservation office." including any applicable approval by the state historic preservation office.
Who is going to be monitoring that dust, the dust control and, you know, just know we're living on the dirt road. With the dust that we have right now.
Do we have field dust control regulations now? Why are, that seems weird to me.
Yeah. Not in the field.
That's why I don't understand why it's. Like, where are they going to have access to water? It's going to be a muddy mess. And then our drain fields is going to fill, or ditches. Anybody else see a problem with that? How are you going to build construction with wet water three times a day? It's going to fill our drainage ditches. It's a waste of water.
I don't know, but D goes going to require groundwater discharge for a moment. So, or a stormwater discharge.
This doesn't make any sense.
So, I think this is still, um, I think that's still covered by this paragraph. We're going to move that section because the as well won't be part of site plan approval. As well will be after. All right, so. I'm going to have to reformat these, but the, the gist of these are, ten is the site plan must show the existing topographical grades and conditions of multiple disneying property at the time of application. Find a baseline soil test including cash and exchange capacity shall be provided township prior to the construction. And, and I'm not sure these will ultimately end up where they're at now, I may have to move them around, but move up through them. Uh, twelve is a written description of how the applicant will address dust control during construction. Such plan shall, I mean, consist of water applications at least three times per day unless it has rained in an increasing three hours of the planned application.
Is that on the roads or on the fields where they're working?
Um, on the, well, I can screw it in on the, where they're working.
It's the construction site.
Okay. And the question was, do you want to water that mountain, make it muddy and cause even more further runoff into our county drains or?
It's dust control.
They do it on construction sites all the time.
They do?
Yep.
It's just a way, it's, it's not.
Well, the farmers don't want it, so.
Do they do it when they build a house?
But understand too, right? This is information that has to be supplied.
Got it.
So, as part of that, planning commission is going to weigh in and go, okay, you know, here, applicant is going to say, here's my plan for dust control. And you might say, looks great. You might also say, no, we want you to do X, Y and Z.
Right. So, that's just covering it up.
Yep. Hazardous waste is already covered, that's why cut thirteen. Fourteen, water usage and cleaning. Detail the methodology plan for cleaning solar panels frequency, listing any, any of all, any and all detergents, surfactants, chemical solutions used for each cleaning and sources of water used to facilitate panel restoration and maintenance. Um, fifteen might have to be relocated, it's required as mill drawings. All right. So, system and location requirements. C, thousand foot setback. And, um, thousand foot setback from all non participating property lines, five hundred feet from other lot lines and public road rights where measured from the edge of the public road right away. This may or may not work. And that depends on the size of your overlay district. Because you could have an overlay district where a thousand feet would mean that you could not engage in that land use, depending on the size of the overlay district.
We only reported due to a motion of the board.
Yep.
What understood that the map would be disclosed and then it would not make sense to be a thousand feet or maybe a certain size.
Yeah, it may not, it may not. And, and obviously, you know, the planning commission is going to have to go through and, and determine the, the location and size of the overlay district. But as of yet, as a, as a planning commission, they have not done that. I guess, I don't have a problem leaving it in there for now, I'm just saying that eventually that may need to be revised.
So, just to note too, that residential structure to the non participating property line was brought by several members of the community because if someone owns vacant residential property that they're looking to build on in the future, but they haven't yet. But having it worded that way could be very detrimental to their property value. So, that's why we asked for a non participating property line.
Yes, many residents express their concern, it's just as important to them to have a setback from the vacant property as it is from their residences. Many people have said that. Actually, the people with vacant land are more adamant than the people with residences.
Because they're waiting to build retirement homes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not, the, the language itself doesn't concern me. We measure a lot of things from property lines, I would rather have it measured from property lines. Um, the distances are probably not.
Yeah. I was stating it more for the property.
Yep.
So, they knew what we were thinking. Being that we're at this talk though, do we know when the map would be disclosed?
Is that a question for me?
It's a question for anyone who has an answer. It's kind of the elephant in the room, right? Can't really discuss some of the meat and potatoes until we know where this has gone and where it costs.
Yeah, I mean, I, I suspect that, you know, the planning commission is going to have to identify that at their next meeting or the meeting thereafter, right? To move this forward and get it done. So, I, I don't know that they're prepared to have that discussion tonight about what property it is, but, um, obviously, they're going to have to do it. That's why, you know, I don't, I don't have any problem leaving the, um, the thousand feet in there for now. But recognizing that that may have to change.
Well, at the last planning commission meeting, it was proposed that it would be presented when you were in attendance to get that new house. So, we thought it would be tonight.
Tonight's just an informational, like, kind of meeting or not? Nobody's making any decisions other than this tonight. The board is not just voting, the planning commission is not doing anything. That would be at their next meeting.
I think the question has this, is Mr. Homier going to provide the overlay district or is the planning commission going to provide the overlay district?
Well, it's, I, it's not for me to decide, right? The plan, I mean, I can give my opinion about where I think it should be located, but ultimately, the planning commission has got to make that decision.
I think that's what we're just looking for, is your opinion. So, we know where it's at and we can go look at it or look at it on a map and decide whether or not. I have my own idea of where it should be, so we can share that next month also.
One of the members thought it wasn't going to be on a farmer's land at the last planning commission meeting.
They did?
Yes. Yes, Megan did.
That's not true, I said it may or may not be on a farmer's land.
Well, how about we just leave it in there for now?
Yep.
Go ahead. Construction schedule and completion date, fine. We already changed nine. Oh, sorry. It's not a thousand.
Yeah. Mr. Homier, why can't there be a special designated setback for the overlay district as opposed to any and other properties affiliated with the concept of the ordinance? Why would that not be?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So, if we're talking about the thousand foot setback being a contradiction to with the overlay and where it might be and all that, is, is there a way to designate a specific setback to a specific overlay district and then have the thousand foot setback applicable to many and other properties?
So, so the reason why you wouldn't do that is because the way that the ordinance is set up, you can only have utility scale energy systems in the overlay district.
Okay.
And nowhere else. That's the whole point.
I, I just wanted to hear it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. So, D talks about a hundred and fifty feet from the edge of any wetland shoreline or drain.
Is there a question there?
There is.
Is that just stating county drains or are we talking private drains that run through all these fields also?
Well, I think this refers to county drains, right?
It's the registered county drains and anything registered as a wetland to the state of Michigan.
Well, who's going to call? Well, who's going to cause a lot of flooding on these, uh, other drains that run through these fields? I'm just not talking the little, you know, drainage tiles, I'm talking there are actual drains that run through there and connect to Conway, Kahakta, Union Drain. So, what happens to them? If they start cutting and then there's going to be some flooding issues.
Yeah, I don't really answer that. I, I don't, I don't, there, there are always... My knowledge is only so limited when it comes to potential hypothetical flooding.
Well, I can give you a five-piece thing I wrote down today.
I will say this, I will say this, generally speaking, right, nobody has the authority to increase drainage on somebody else's property, right, beyond what the normal agricultural runoff rate is. Otherwise, if they do that, it's a trespass nuisance, you can bring an action against that person.
But can you just add in there that county and private drains and that solves the issue with what I just had?
Do we have the authority to do that?
Because right now, a little bit, you know, flow rate is positive.
Yeah, it depends, right? So, I'll give you an example, let's suppose, let's suppose I've got a private drain on my property, but that water is retained on my property, right? You wouldn't need a, you wouldn't need a setback from a private drain in that instance.
Right.
But, but I don't know, um, the answer to that, only because I don't know yet how that overlay district is going to lay out.
Right.
So the way I envision this, this, these would be public drains.
So, it would save us a lot of time in the backtracking if we, you know, knew where it was at.
Yes, it says when the overlay district is disclosed. When are we going to, do they have a time, a goal, when that overlay is going to be disclosed to us? I mean, this could go on, I mean...
Yeah, like I said, I, I suspect.
Those other areas have that designated already.
I'm sorry?
Other areas already have that designated. Why is it taking so long to get the overlay district disclosed here in Conway?
Because the, a decision on the overlay has not been made.
I know, but is there a goal, a time?
Oh, yeah, well, I said, look, it's going to, it's going to...
For that to be disclosed?
It's going to have to be included, right, prior to or concurrent with the public hearing on the, because we haven't even done that yet, right? So there's going to be a public hearing on the ordinance, including the overlay, which would constitute a MAC amendment, to the extent that the overlay lays over that existing district. So, you know, that's going to, the planning commission's going to have to take that up before we move this forward. So what do they do at the next meeting, meeting after? I'll let the planning commission decide that.
Thank you.
Yep. So, the only reason why I revised this was to allow the planning commission to increase the setback, and I'm fine with a hundred and fifty feet, if they determine that that setback is necessary to protect the public health safety and welfare.
Sure.
So, this, um, this section E, I'm going to have to take a closer look at.
If you'd like a copy of that report, we have it.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm curious about this section, only because we have, um, depending on what those setbacks are, right? From non-participating property. Are you anticipating that these buffer or filter strips will be located in those setbacks?
Just like ground.
Depending on wherever the need, wherever the drains or waterways are. Since that far from the, from the waterway, whichever waterway you want to say, is. Whether it be a drain, a river, a lake, whatever that particular waterway is, that's what they suggest. You'd buffer be, depending on the soils. And the toboggan season of the area and how fast water will run.
Okay.
Yeah, it certainly could be located within the hundred and fifty feet setback.
All right, um, sixteen feet, um, my information may allow twenty feet, um, so I'm fine with
On the screening, are we going back, um, to the setback, whatever ends up being, is where the tree line's going to go, not at the property line, correct?
Well, I'm not sure, I don't know, I, I've got to look, because I'm not sure it specifies where.
I haven't seen it specified, that's why I was wondering how they're going to do it.
Does it matter?
Because that way it gives, huh?
Does it matter?
Well, it kind of does.
I mean, the, the whole point of the screening is to block any view from adjacent non-participating property.
Correct.
So if you had whatever setback you have, now you're creating this, um, artificial tree line in the middle of what might otherwise be a productive farm field in ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years, right?
Right.
So it seems to me to be counterintuitive that you would do that. If, if your hope is to later return that property to agricultural use, now you've got a tree line right in the middle of a farm, possibly.
Correct. But if you're like me and you've got an acre and a half, you are now blocked in a little, you see nothing. I mean, there's, there's no, I understand what you're saying and I'm not sure any answer to this. But it was, it was, you know, to keep a passage for the deer to get through and, I mean, oh, I don't know, just a question.
Yeah. I mean, I, I certainly understand the point, I just, I, I think that, you know, requiring that, and part of this too, is going to be some discretion from the planning commission about, you know, what this looks like where it is, right? Because these are all, um, screening, like for instance, says to obscure it to the greatest extent possible, from all sides and open views surrounding the participating property. And so, given that sort of general nature of it, I think that the planning commission's going to review a site plan and say, okay, you need more screening here, you need less there, or this is adequate, this is not, right? That's the way I envision it.
So the planning commission actually come down to the properties that they're, or is it just a site thing that you know where these properties and lots are at? Would you actually come out and see the land?
Well, they certainly could, um, go out and see it, there's no provision. The problem with that becomes, is the planning commission meeting out there at once? Because that presents some O and A problem, uh, overview of that issue, right? So we can't have a meeting with more than a quorum of the public body. And so if they all went out there, they would have to give notice, they'd have to take minutes, they'd have to treat it like every other meeting, which is impractical. That doesn't mean they can't go out on their own and say, okay, here's what we're going to do.
I, to that point, I got a question, because I do believe that the board went to see the Chawassee, uh, solar field months, months ago, like, at the beginning of all this, they were escorted in a bus and whatnot down there. Wasn't that, how was that not considered a quorum or whatnot? Now that you bring it up.
I was the only attendee.
Oh, okay, okay. I just know it was brought up to all the board members to go, so I never knew who actually was there.
We've run into this quite a bit too with like, um, I'll give you a perfect example, the MTA just held its conference in Traverse Street, right? And so I went, a lot of my clients went. But there may be more of an forum of the board that happens to go to these educational events, right? And provided that they don't meet as a public body and deliberate or discuss public policy, then it's not a violation of the O and A. So they could go out to a property together, all of them, as long as none of them says a word. Which doesn't happen too often.
And that's as long as we don't say a word about what we're looking at.
About what?
We can have a conversation about other things, which is not sad.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
And the trip to Chawassee was an informational meeting. And we were not acting as committed at that point, we were just educating ourselves.
So, um, I don't, on the screening issue, I'm trying to get to the arborvitae species issue. Does this mean that you may or may not?
May not.
May not what?
We're under, everyone thinks they're going to get eaten up by the deer, so we just don't want to allow it.
Species appropriate in the ordinance or is it more part of the site plan application review based on, like, spruce right now is an issue, um, elements have had issues, ash for, you know?
I think we need to bring in a, a registered arborist to tell us what the plant. They'll tell us what the plant, it's going to last thirty years or forty years or fifty years.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily...
They're early in, but they're hungry.
So, these, under this, um, application portion, these are substantive requirements, and that's how we worded this. And so when we say screening, this is the place where it belongs because it's a substantive requirement of the application. And so in that context, we're talking about what needs to be screened to the greatest extent possible from, um, all sides, um, from participating property, and then what that screening must contain. Two rows of staggered evergreen trees planted not less than twelve feet apart, trunk to trunk, and the two rows shall be no greater than ten feet apart. And then we allow for substitutions, shall be approved in advance by the planning commission, uh, but no species of any arborvitae shall be permitted.
Thank you for clarifying where that.
Good? All right. Uh, planting shall be at least eight feet tall, at the time of planting, measured from the top of the root ball to the base of the leader, not including the height of the leader. I know that this is probably a tree reference, so I don't know what a leader is.
It's a little skinny thing at the top.
Right.
But you put the star in.
As long as somebody knows what it is.
It's the top of the Christmas tree.
Shall reach a height of ten feet within three growing seasons. Um, I'm fine with that, I don't have any issues with it. Although, we might just say top of a tree, but, just saying. Trees may be trimmed but shall maintain height of at least ten feet, fine. Evergreen trees shall be Norway spruce, in row one, most of the best, row two, shall be tonne colored fir, fine.
Why would you use a tonne colored fir instead of two Norway spruce?
Don't ask me, I didn't write it.
I planted both, both of those on my property, and the Norway spruce worked great. The tonne colored fir, not so much.
The Norways grow really fast, too.
They do, they're one of the fastest growing evergreens.
That's, that's why I said you need to have an arborist to come in and say, hey, this is what you need to do.
I have training with Michigan Nursery Land State Association as well as I'm a student.
There you go.
And I planted, um, eleven acres of habitat, Norways, they're the best.
Yes, they are. You know, when we're getting down to identification of trees, I think we're doing pretty well.
If you grow Norway, let's move on.
Done. Uh, good arbo, arboricultural techniques shall be followed.
I can't say hope and rain depends.
Oh, boy. So, what is replaced at fifty percent?
Dead.
Oh, of, of each tree?
Yes.
So if a tree is over fifty percent dead?
It's got to go.
You got to be more specific than that, right, Mike, to put it in there, as far as the language. If that's what you want.
I don't know how you measure fifty percent dead.
If it's anything tall, it's got twenty-four branches and twelve of them are dead.
Yeah, yes, I realize it's fifty percent.
Defoliated or?
Dead, falling off.
Brown defoliated, I don't know.
Okay, we'll leave that as, I don't think that's going to be a big issue. Fine, fine. Security fencing. Security fencing installed. To dust strip and completely substation would be regulated by separate ordinance on the rest of your own land.
Were we actually considering a transfer station?
Well...
That's a good one, a transfer station.
Yeah, although you might have one of those, uh, smaller one at wherever there's an interconnection of the transmission.
And that would depend on how big the overlay is there, the size of the transmission station.
Could be, yeah, I mean, certainly the size of the...
You know, if you're going to have seven hundred acres as your overlay, you're going to have to have a bigger transmission.
But I, I don't think your substations are regulated by separate ordinance, but I could be wrong about that. But I'm fine with, um, with this. Containment system, well, so, some of my clients have... Containment system, well, so, some of my clients have thought about this security fencing a little differently, only because of wildlife and what that means. And so, you know, rather than mandating it, they sort of leave that to the site plan review. So rather than saying it shall be installed, saying something like, security fencing may be required.
Yes, I agree with that.
That may be required versus shall. I would reorder. That gives us some leniency there to.
Like I said, like Mike said, a lot of that's going to come out in the planning, in the planning review. Site plan review, and so it's just like, those are all details that will work out in the future.
Could be.
I thought that was a security issue for them.
It likely will be. I think that they will propose them in all cases, and I guess what I'm saying is that the, in order to address the wildlife thing, the planning commission probably would like to have some flexibility.
Probably itself would probably say it's too risky.
Well, rather than calling it like, security fencing, one of my clients has said, you know, instead of security fencing, we might require an attic design so that it ushers wildlife through the facility. So, but that's up in the UPA.
Well, I'll tell you that the impression I got from the Shaiwasi facility is they have security fencing, they don't want wildlife in there.
Yeah, I'm sure they.
They don't want the deer in there at all.
Yeah.
So they made it clear that they don't want it.
But they left the gate open numerous, on numerous occasions, they have pictures of it in video.
Yeah, so.
So we see video online of deers running for their lives, once somebody goes and locks the gate and doesn't detect the deer, and I think you could put barbed wire on there, I mean, if you drive by there and you see one hanging on fence, that would be all it takes. Not only that, but we've already had one terrorist attack a solar facility north of Las Vegas, and he just drove through the gate with his car, so I think maybe the barbed wire is not necessary. If somebody intend on doing damages, it's going to drive to the fence, I think.
Or they're going to cut the fence.
Right, or just throw, you know, some over.
So, you started to say, is this substation under a different ordinance, or should it be under the?
Well, substations generally are a different class of care than, say, an interconnection, right? When I think of substation, that is owned generally by the regulated public utility facility, not by somebody putting in a soul. Containment system is fine, I can't, I can't say that I know exactly what is inside of a transformer. They're full of all different types of insulating fluid materials, okay? There's many, many different types. A lot of them will say that it's only mineral oil, that it's not hazardous to the environment, but there are other types, so we don't know what kind of transformers they're putting in there, but they're filled with hundreds and hundreds of gallons of oil. So I have seen in the past, they put a concrete pit, what they sunk, fill it with gravel or whatever, and then sub the transformer, if there's any leaking, it doesn't get down into the soil, and then you got all kinds of problems after that.
That's where the old PCB issue came from, was transformers.
Correct. So, here's my question. We don't require containment systems for any regulated public utility transformers.
Yes, they do. In substations, they do.
Yeah, in substation.
But not like on a hole for a, like a house transformer?
Right, right.
It's a self-contained unit, and if it leaks or explodes, then they come in and they do cleanup after they replace it.
I don't think you're talking apples and apples, I think you're talking apples and rock oranges.
Substation, they're, they could be, could be square feet.
Steve, it could be a combination, it could be a combination of ground-based transformers and switches, right?
They're going to be multiple ground-based transformers in that area.
Yeah, and always asking for.
You're not talking just one pad mount transformer at a storefront or something, you're talking about multiple pad mount transformers in a agricultural area. Nobody wants that in the soil or in the water.
It's just a containment underneath the transformer to catch.
Right.
Catch the oil.
It could be leaking for a long time, and they don't even know it.
That's right.
Should razor wire be included with that barbed wire? that otherwise, I think they're fine. Popcorn will be served. Oh, thank you. This, this, actually, I litigated this issue for Albert Township, and the court ruled shall not be, means instantaneous. That said, to the extent there was a question about it, I'm fine with taking that in there. But it's not an average, it's instantaneous, there's a, there's a, it's actually LMAX, LEQ 1, but I think more often than not, it's not exclusively instantaneous, so we'll just move it. Doesn't exceed the following limits, 40 DVA, LMAX is under the property line, usually 79, 35 between 9 and 7. This, I want to, I know it's not really highlighted, but I want to break that anyways, this, this sound barrier of a solid decorative masonry wall. Not my favorite provision. Only because I think you can achieve what you need to achieve via either a berm if you require one, or the tree screening. Having, it seems to me that having a solid masonry wall built in the middle of a farm field doesn't make much sense. And so, I guess, you know, to the extent that we require in the ordinance, screening with the evergreen tree, is all we're talking about now, is a berm, and do you even need that?
I believe we do, if you've heard them recordings.
Well, you are fine.
I think that's speaking specifically to inverters, isn't it? Around the inverters.
Yeah, no, I, like I said, it's not, I, we have clients who want different things, it's not my favorite provision, especially for more overall areas. So, you know, whether, whether you want to require a masonry wall around the inverters, I, I don't know that that changes any dynamic. The dynamic is under here, right? This, this is the sound limit, period. So they can have a masonry wall constructed around all of them, they can still meet these sound limits. I mean, it wouldn't change that, except that you have these masonry walls built out in the middle of a field.
Sounds like we should only put them in industrial areas then.
Yeah, that's what I think, too.
What would you like to do with this?
Those kind of barriers seem appropriate in a, next to a highway, like somebody just said, but in the middle of a field, seems, like you said, if the sound, the measurement of sound is the issue, then it doesn't seem like it's in keeping with the rural farmland type area.
So, strike it?
Yes.
Do you have any enforceability issues with, with the levels of the DVA OMAX, as far as if it was to be administered by the township?
Well.
To make that determination.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you could, you can get a, typically, what my clients do, they would hire some acoustician, right? If there was a complaint, right? If somebody said, well, the sound, I think this sounds too loud, well, you might then, or some of my other clients will get their own sound meters that they keep out there, right? Just to get kind of an idea, so.
Does that say the sound analysis, I can't read the word, it's before administrator?
So.
Is it zoning administrator?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this, this says, the operator of the utility scale solar energy system shall provide for a sound analysis, four months, conducted by an auditory expert chosen by the township at the expense of the applicant every three years. And it says annually, a sound analysis is to be performed by the zoning administrator. If a measurement exceeds stated auditory max allowed levels, a sound analysis shall be required to be paid by the operator to ensure compliance with these noise requirements.
So is that contradictory, that the auditory expert versus the zoning administrator who's not?
So the way I, the way I understand this provision is, at least every three years, there's a sound analysis required, but in the interim years, if the zoning administrator on an annual basis has measurements that exceed the levels, then a sound analysis would be required in between those three years.
Or could we just make it annually and strike them in red?
Yeah, why are we having, why are we having a zoning administrator do this annually?
I don't see the zoning administrator.
No, it doesn't seem like that's appropriate.
If we just made it an annual thing, rather than three years.
Right. And Mr. Grubb just said a decibel level, and we're at 65 to 70, as they're sitting there talking.
Yeah, you can put it here's a lot, you can put it right in the audio log up there.
Yeah, I understood, but then you get into the issue of calibration.
Right, what I'm worried about is somebody saying, well, you're.
No, understood, I'm just saying, the third-party issue.
Yes, I think it's very good, annually is better than us, than us amateurs running out there and using something.
11 is probably fine, I'm going to put it in here to look, because it may go in the decommissions rather than here, but. So this section says that you're going to inspect all drain tiles at least once every three years, and then it's added, or in the event of flooding it or non-participating property owner complains. Well, imagine if you will, that you get a very hard rain in somebody's property and floods. I'm not sure that if somebody complains, that that is going to be the responsibility of the neighboring property owner to go then and get the rain tiles inspected again. And that's where I have an issue with this. I think once every three years is appropriate, given the fact that the first has to occur before it's in operation, and by that I mean post-construction, prior to operation.
And/or flooding occurrence?
Well, then every three years, they have to televise it.
And/or flooding occurrence?
Well, that's what it says now, but I, I don't know, I don't know what you mean by flooding occurrence, right? Because somebody somewhere is going to say, never. Because somebody somewhere is going to say, never had this happen before.
And we don't allow it, there's no ordinance with current farmers. And if a drain blows and it's now impacting a property in the house associated with that farm, there's no ordinance that says they have to do that.
Understood, but there's a change in use.
To me, it doesn't matter. If you're going to flood, if you're going to flood a neighboring property.
It's a change in use.
And you're going to flood out their basement, you're, now they're going to have a history of flooding and there's going to be no repair, there's going to be no enforcement, there's going to be nothing. And then that's going to impact that person's house and the sale of their house. I'm just saying, we're, we're going to put an ordinance here for broken drain tiles, but we don't have it anywhere else in the ordinance.
Well, I think this is a huge concern for us because it's inevitable that they're going to damage the tile system with their trenching. Not only their posts, thousands of posts, but particularly with their trenching. We know it's going to happen. We have testimony from the residents next to that.
Chiwasi.
Chiwasi, yes.
$50,000 when the owner paid to get it fixed.
Is it, could it be a performance based thing, Mike?
Not a performance based thing.
I know it's, may or may not happen, but it's after, it's like after the fact, after it happens, you know, where you've got the flooding that's already occurred. So is there anything you can do at post, post-flooding versus your pushback on the inspections of the drain tiles? I mean, how do you prevent or how do you control the flooding issue, potential or otherwise?
Well, so the reason why I think this is important, and that's why I add it, right? Post-construction, but before it becomes operation. And then they would have to repair any damage within 60 days. So, because you presume within that, if they are finished with the construction, post-construction, prior to operation, they identify any damage to any drain tile and have a requirement to fix it, it seems to me that the next inspection could be three years from now. And any flooding in between there is not likely the cause of a failed drain tile. Right?
It sounds.
Maybe.
Well, my concern is, they won't even know, if they're doing this in the summertime, they're not even going to know that they've damaged the drain tile. They may not know.
Well, yeah, except it requires robotic camera footage, right?
But most farmers, at least in my property, I know where the county drains are. I don't know where the feeder tiles are. I have.
The private tiles, yeah, the drain.
I mean, we've got to expect there's going to be huge drainage issues with these projects. Now, if the project is small enough, it may not make a big difference. But it's inevitable. But I, and I know, I've seen firsthand in reference to what Megan said, when the Snyder Sherwood drain was replaced on me, the contractor missed hooking up a drainage, main drainage tile on the neighbor, it flooded my property for weeks. He also missed hooking up a main tile for my property. You cannot imagine what, I'm sure you can imagine, it's going to be huge. This is one of the reasons why I'm stressing minimize area for these projects. You know, I don't know the best way to handle it, but we have to expect it's going to be huge drainage.
Or if it's shorter than every three years, put it by annually. That takes care of your seasonal change.
I guess, you know, let's assume for just a minute that construction is done, post-operation, they do identify and televise all of the drain tiles. In the next 12 months, what would cause a drain tile to fail?
After completion, you're saying, after the inspections have been done? Unless somebody goes in and does a repair or something like that, they tear, they tear out the access roads or something like that. An unforeseen event, I guess, I don't know.
I mean, I'm, I'm not necessarily stuck on, on three years, but it seems annually is a little much.
Every other?
The thing is, is like you just said, I mean, how many people when they go to take over the farmland and put this out there know where those tiles are and even locate them?
That's the problem we had even a long time ago. How do, how do you know where you locate them other than the county drain?
Those things are old.
You know, I did talk to Ranger, one of the principals of Ranger Powers, and I asked him that question. And he said, well, there is a way you can fly over it or with a drone or something to measure the temperature change, but like that, they're not going to do it.
Ground penetrating radar.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. He didn't say that they'd ever done. And he admitted to me, this was Drew Melick's boss, he admitted to me that drainage is a huge issue for them.
Okay. This is a way I've changed it, two years.
As you pointed out, it's post-construction and post-camera inspection. It's not just going to spontaneously poke holes in all the drain tiles every 12 months.
Right, I mean, I do have my company that tells, tells tile field every couple of years.
All right, fire suppression, fine.
Yes, so we did not know what we meant by transfer stations.
So typically, it's that interconnection between transmission lines and the solar energy facility, which may be located at the site, may be located at the transmission line. Well, yeah, I'll take a look at it, but.
That would be the utility substation. That, that substation is owned by the utility.
Yeah, I think.
I've never heard of it called a transfer station.
There are certain components that are still owned by that solar energy facility for the interconnection.
Once it's inside that substation, they're done with it.
Yeah, that's not completely correct. Because I have, I have a substation in another municipality where there are components owned by consumers and others. So.
So that's the utility?
Consumers is a utility, but, but some of, there are other entities that own other components in there where the interconnections occur.
Should that be covered under a separate part of an ordinance or a separate ordinance altogether?
I don't think so, but I, but I'll review the language on the transfer station itself. Battery storage not permitted, fine. Inverters shall be setback at least a thousand feet. We talked about that, maybe we revise it, but otherwise that's fine. Straight voltage assessments. Those provisions are fine, I don't have any problem with those. No problem with those, ground cover. Drainage, fine. I'll have to revise this to be consistent with the other, but I'll make a note of that. Insurance, we've already talked about. I think that this is already addressed, but I will double check that, at least in terms of the safety plan. So the public roads and the drains issue is an interesting one, particularly the public roads. I don't think that, you know, this section says utility scale solar energy system owner, operator, property owner shall be responsible jointly and separately for making repairs in public roads, drains and infrastructure damage by infrastructure misuse of, or damage to a utility scale, I'm sorry, utility scale solar energy system. The road issue is an interesting one, one because you don't have authority over the public roads, the county road commission does. No township owns any roads. Very limited circumstance they might own a road, but then it's not a public road, it's a sort of a kind of weird thing, but.
However, right, it is, it is the county's responsibility to do it, but oftentimes they want us to share in the box.
They do.
Yeah, so it's not that we're responsible for doing it. Maybe what it should say there is that they were responsible to contribute to the cost.
To the township's portion of the repair or something like that.
Yeah, so if I, if I said to you, you know, they damaged the road, what does that mean? And how do you quantify that damage? If we're talking about just driving trucks over the road, I would submit that that's not damage that you can assess to anyone. I, I understand, I understand you contribute to the maintenance of those roads, you're not legally responsible to do so. You do so voluntarily. But the road commission, even the road commission, in just very limited circumstances, has the authority to even charge people for, you know, use of the road. So it's a tough issue. That doesn't mean that the applicant can't agree to it, it's just, you know, requiring it as a condition of approval is a tough thing to do. Like, who's going to determine who damaged the road and what repairs are necessary and who's going to pay?
The burden of proof is on the township, and I don't think they have the capability to do it or the authority.
Or the authority, I wouldn't say we don't have the authority.
Right.
So we're talking about like normal construction use, right? Trucks and things like that, but how about when they drive down the middle of the road with a doser or an excavator like they did in Chiwasi County and they leave it a wash motor because of the tracks? I mean, that was an issue up there, they did that, they did do that stuff. They drove equipment that they should have been loading on a trailer that can get from one part of the site to the other, they just decided to dig it down the road.
And what happened?
The, the road has divots every eight inches, the difference between the parts of the tracks all the way down the road. So when you drive down the road, it's like you're on a, a rumble strips going on a dirt road the entire way.
And what the road commission did?
Not much.
But it's the authority of the road commission and their responsibility to repair damaged roads, not the townships and I don't know, just the private entity do it, like you were saying, like it's the road commission that's responsible.
The road, the road commission's responsibility is limited to making roads safe and passable. That's the standard. And that's a crummy standard, I get it. I didn't write the law, so, and that's why it makes it so difficult, right? Because it's oftentimes, we refer to these sort of as impact fees. And impact fees specifically in Michigan are not permissible. And so when you condition sort of these approvals, if you were to condition those approvals on payment of damage to the road, that may be an improper impact fee. Not to mention all of the problems that go along with that, like, you know, when was the damage done? Who did it, right? Because nobody's standing there with a camera. So it, it just presents some problems.
So what is your recommendation? Strike this or?
Yeah, I would strike it. Yep. I mean, we already have compliance with state and federal requirements. Now, that, that would not preclude the road commission from seeking some maintenance agreement with the applicant, but I don't think they're going to need any approvals from the road commission.
Would you have, would you have any knowledge of how they did it up on the wind farms when they made the, the changes in the radiuses and the intersections to get the, the cans and the turbine blade, you know, the turbine blades and the cells, they had to make the wide radiuses? Do you have any idea of the agreements with the road commission there?
I know that they had agreements, but I don't know that I ever saw any of them.
Okay.
I can speak, they, they'll do an initial assessment. Like our, when I worked at Road, we were hired by the, it's more like actually the, like the owners of the waves, all the wind farms. So they'll go, we'll go out and do an assessment of the load that they're in use to the site. And they give it like a reading. And then you assess it after the project is complete. And if there's a substantial difference or you can mark it, you can figure out what that difference is and they can either charge them, I don't know how it was all set up to charge a rate or charge something, but they can, they can get, you can assess the road before and after. Now, with their roads, it's going to be a lot harder to do. You probably could only, probably do it on like parts of the pavement, we only have a couple of those, so. Because in theory, the dirt road is just going to be plowed three times a year anyway, so it's, I mean, they're going to get fixed in three times a year, so.
Yeah, I just, I, I just think it's incredibly difficult. It's a, it's a lofty goal, I just don't know how you enforce it.
Why is he striking the disposal?
What about the disposal that you just struck?
Disposal of solar panels, not even on property, like they pile up at some of the other ones.
here and ending here, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this says, any solar panel damaged beyond repair or used shall be replaced or removed from the project site within seven days, so we already sort of talked about that time limit, because there's that other provision, right? And shall be disposed of off-site in accordance with any state or federal requirements. Well, there's already an obligation to comply with all state, federal, and local laws, okay? So, if we're going to put something in here, then I would recommend that be something similar to that be included into decommissioning, as opposed to here.
I think the issue is, is they don't want damaged panels being stored on-site, I think is the issue, it's not a decommissioning issue, it's a storage of damaged panels that they haven't removed.
Yeah, they got a pile of them.
So.
We went over solidly, we went over the waste earlier.
So you're saying if one gets broken and they replace it, they just throw the broken one back on the property somewhere?
Yeah.
You just added, not just the hazardous waste, but the removal of unused or damaged irreplaceable panels, something along those lines.
Wouldn't it be panels and all equipment?
All right, I'll figure out what I'm going to ask. So all of this is probably fine, subject to my comments earlier about the six months, I'm okay with this, except for this last sentence, an original topography shall be approved by the township as part of the original site plan review, or later as part of G-Commission. I don't agree with that. The whole thing or part? Just that last, all right. Then it goes on, just that last sentence. Annual report shall be provided to the un administrator showing continuity of operations shall notify the county administrator if use is deceased prior to decommissioning. At what output?
What, showing continuity what? How will they know that?
Well, they would have an idea, I suspect, when it's approved, right? Because this is an annual report after that. So when, when you have these systems, right, you're going to have what, wattage that it's going to put out yourself.
Right.
So it'd anticipate each year would be at whatever that output number?
I'm not sure what this means here.
We weren't sure whether to have it in our lawful or legal.
Yeah, lawful or legal, it doesn't matter, either way, there's no significant difference, all right. But, but I'm not sure what, I'm a law township, I don't know what that.
Well, it's true that we're not a municipal corporation, correct?
It is, it's true that you are a general law township, but it is a municipal corporation.
It's not my understanding, we're a municipal corporation.
What's that?
It's not my understanding.
That you're not?
No.
Oh, you are.
No, we are not. We are not a municipal corporation.
What are you? General law, county law township, that's my answer.
Yeah, and you're a general law township, but you are a municipal corporation for purposes of Michigan law.
For purposes of Michigan law, but not for this township, you're, you're reading it by statute, right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, yes.
Okay.
I mean, you're, you are a creature of the legislature.
I agree. But we're, I just want to make it clear that we're just not a municipal corporation, that's all.
Okay, but you are.
All right, prove it.
Okay.
Tonight, though.
All right, moving on.
I see that's what we've been arguing about.
I don't, I'm not sure what all of this is for. What is an approved complaint vendor?
So the law was about having something more public that was a complaint resolution process. It's located in the owner township ordinance, so that residents could see when other people are complaining, or what the issues are related to solar plant, system, whatever, and almost like employees are available, and you can check who's asking for what, that you could actually see what, what the other issues are and how they're being resolved, how quickly they're being resolved, always known for the knowledge. But we also realize it's kind of a big class.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I mean, all of that information is public information, right? I mean, to the extent that it exists in record, public records, right? So, you know, I, I view this as, they have to provide a complaint resolution process, and, and these are the requirements. Now, if you, if you want to include something like, for instance, who is going to administer then that data? Is it going to, are we going to force the owner operator to maintain a website and publish that information? I, you know, I wouldn't trust you. Yeah, I, I just think this goes a bit far.
What about the escrow account?
Well, there's, there's already an escrow account, now whether or not we want to expand that escrow account, I don't, I just don't want to be complicative, so we could, we could, we might be able to include something in there for the investigation of those complaints. Here's the hard part, though, there's always going to be somebody complaining about things that are not actual violations. And that becomes the balance, right? Because not everybody is going to be happy, we never are, and so somebody will say repeatedly, well, I can hear this, or I can hear that, may or may not come from there, I don't know. But we try and, we try and filter those out some way, so that those complaints are credible and not just people complaining. So, but let me work on this section.
Yeah, one of, one of the residents said to me, well, we need to give an escrow account or money, or something, to cover all the things that the power companies say they're going to do, but in other words, they were talking about, what if they don't replace the trees that are dying, and, what if they don't fix the dirty jobs?
Well, Steve, we've got that one in this generally, it's fine, we're coming up.
Annual voting for George to prove this.
Good luck, Sean.
I propose that.
Denied.
We're good with that third party method that doesn't exist generally.
Yeah, I, generally, I think this, this section is fine, except for the artificial timeframe, because there may be instances in which seven days is simply impossible, and we need an outlet for that, rather than just saying, well, you're shut down. But I'll, I'll work on that section.
Well, you mentioned thirty days earlier, it's got to be reasonable.
I don't, I don't quite, this isn't my favorite provision. If you look at this, and it says, if they're found to be in violation, the owner shall take immediate action to bring it into compliance. If they fail to bring it into compliance within thirty days, the township may seek relief at law or equity to abate the nuisance and also issue a civil action citation. So what we're saying is that for any sort of violation, we're going to give them thirty days. Well, that may or may not be appropriate, depending on the violation, and so I don't necessarily want to tie my hands and say, okay, we have to do this now, we have to give thirty days, depending on what that violation might be. So I think it's enough to say, the owner shall take immediate action to bring the utility scale into compliance, and if they don't, we can seek immediate relief. Sounds good. So, this section says, at the time of the special use application, the applicant shall submit two third-party contractor bids for construction of all fencing, landscaping, and drainage improvements associated with the utility scale solar energy system, and the bond shall- And the bond shall be the higher of the two bids. Why?
That's my question.
What if they're both ridiculously low? What we generally do in terms of surety bonds is say, okay, it's going to be 125% of the cost of building these things, constructing them, right? And those would have to be reviewed by the township's engineer. Because they can give you an estimate of probable cause or look at an estimate, determine whether the estimate's appropriate or not. This section would require security to be a minimum of $1,250,000. I have no idea where that comes from, that actual number.
Is that addressing public rights, right, care of it?
Yeah.
So like, curious, so, you know, Sarah took these ordinance, it's from other townships that put in, and ones we thought we would work down.
There are some that I've worked on, like Marion's, right? But I didn't start Marion's from scratch, that was something. So I had some input into it and to give her some section, but I didn't draft this section, I can tell you that.
Well, we certainly, we know the power companies are really trying to pick this apart. Like reviewing some of their court cases, we certainly don't want anything in that's not repensible or that gives them an opportunity to do that.
So for this, right, we have the problem I talked about earlier, which is jurisdictional, right? And the arbitrariness of the many people. I don't know what the basis for that is. Yep. Twenty-four to eight, I don't necessarily have an issue with. Seems like they would mount, but if you want eight, fine, I mean. Done it?
Name insured, that name insured.
Not sure what this access agreement is. And why you would need one.
Something's going to be, right?
Yeah, I think so.
It was a suggestion, but some, oh, by the mean, it was something that, so it wasn't an idea.
So typically, you know, we would make a lot of these the condition of approval anyways, so they're going to be there, they're just not, I just want to be accurate for that. It's a condition of approval. We're done? What?
One thing they got missed, excuse me, one thing they got missed under the commission. We mentioned that the power lines needed to be removed regardless of depth. We wanted everything, puddings and pylons.
That's something.
Oh, did, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't have a problem with that.
Is there a time limit on the entire project? Like, if it's approved and they do it, in ten years, they got to get reapproval, so, or twenty years, they got to get reapproval. So if we've had ten years of hell from them, we can say, nope, you're not doing it no more, clean it up and get out. Or you've been great neighbors and here's another ten years.
Act special land use permits reviewed annually?
There was a township that humanized their leases to ten years or seven thirty so that we can see what damage it brings on the settlement.
Some of the agreements with the landlords is like twenty-year, thirty-year agreements with the landlords, but what about this as far as their special use permit? Is it good for ten, twenty, thirty, fifteen, hundred?
There's an annual inspection requirement. So I would think.
So after one year of hell, we can say, don't get out?
Well, what does, I'm not sure what you mean by one year of hell. Do you mean?
No, no, I'm just saying.
No, sir, but, hear me out. So are you saying that they're in violation of their permit? Because there are remedies for that.
Well, I'm just saying, say they're constantly in violation for multiple different things. And I know we got a surety bond possibly in here that, you know, we would end up having to fix with their money per se, but if it's a constant problem of them not maintaining like they're supposed to.
Then that's a violation of the permit and could result in a revocation.
At any time?
At any time. I should say, after notice.
Well, yeah.
And opportunity to be heard.
But is there still a, every ten, fifteen years, reabout?
No.
Or renewal of the?
Not as abstracted. Part of the reason, part of the reason for that is, and there, you might be able to include such a provision. So, but if I said to you that, well, we're going to renew these annually and at any time we could revoke that permit, not for non-compliance, just because the, it's arbitrary that we say, well, we don't want it here anymore.
Well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying do it yearly or that much. I'm saying just after ten years or, you know, instead of just, you're going to do whatever you want for fifty years or a hundred years.
Well, let me ask this. Let's suppose that during that ten years, they've been the consonant neighbor, they've complied with everything, no problems, no issues, complied to a T with their permit and all the conditions. What basis would you have to not renew it?
You wouldn't, and I understand that.
That's my point, though, is that non-compliance, right, hearing, opportunity to be heard, revocation, right? But you could do that at any time, as long as they're not in compliance. And it's the non-compliance that we're focused on. Because if they're in compliance, I suspect you wouldn't have a basis to either revoke or not even renew. If you said, well, we'll issue a special land use permit, but it's only good for ten years. At the end of that ten years, they would simply reapply and you'd have to renew it anyways. Does that make sense?
I have a question. On the, okay, so we say we have a demonstrated need for this township and it's X amount of kilo lots or however you want to, X amount of acreage of land, however you want to say. And we put all of that in solar, okay? Does that still cover us as far as wind goes? Or is that a whole nother animal that we're going to have to? It is?
And it's regulated a lot differently.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's so spread out, right? I mean, you're never, in your township, I shouldn't say never, theoretically you could, but you're not likely to produce what your demonstrated need would be with the number of turbines that you could ever put in a township. In other words, you know, when you do, you've probably seen wind projects, right? They're spread out over multiple jurisdictions.
Right.
And so it's never the case where one jurisdiction now is looking at, say, one or two turbines and that's going to fulfill all of the demonstrated need. Having said that, there's still this whole demonstrated need issue about, you know, electricity in general. Like, is there anybody in the township who says, hey, I'm building a house, or I'm building a factory, and I can't get electricity? I don't think, I don't think there's a premise that can't get electricity if they want it. And in fact, premises are moving off of the grid, not onto it, right? In some cases. So just understand that it's regulated differently, we have to treat it differently because we'll never regulate it the same way these solar projects are done.
Okay.
But it is a different, it's a whole different angle. Yep.
I've got a question. When we do this solar overlay and we're as happy as we can possibly be about it, and we get a new PC in two years, they decide, they want to reopen this and move this overlay. So we spend the rest of our lives waiting for the next shoe to fall, that they're going to decide to move it and put it over by our house and, you know, how can we make sure that once this overlay is set, it stays there and can never be moved around our township and messed with us again? So we're going back through all this.
You can't.
There's nothing in our master plan we can do to protect this, so we could, we're going to have to worry about this for the rest of the time we live in these townships.
Well, it's the same thing, I mean, you know, for any property owner anywhere in the state, right? You have to be concerned about what land use is coming down the road and might be located against you. I'll give you a perfect example. When the legislature introduced legislation regarding gravel mines, that they could be located anywhere. That, from a homeowner perspective, that's problematic, right? It didn't matter whether property was zoned residential, you could have a gravel mine right next door to you. Now, having said that, zoning is a legislative matter, right? And there's this concept that you cannot tie the hands of future legislative public bodies. So for example, even if you put a provision in there that says, this shall never be changed, that is unlawful. And that's because each legislative body gets to determine what's appropriate and what's not. And you folks get to vote for them. That's how it works. I didn't invent the representative government, but here we are.
Happens with the presidency, you see, and the governor, see.
I very much appreciate you all coming out. I would have not had any better groups to spend a Friday night with.
You need good life.